Education meeting. Meeting to order at 5:30 PM. May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Griffin?
Okay. Carla John-Herret.
Present.
Erin Hanna.
Present.
Tanya Taylor.
Present.
Woody Morris.
Present.
Brian Dawson.
Absent.
Penny Williams-Wolffert.
She said, "absent."
She said, "absent."
Okay, okay, so I put her down as absent.
Thank you.
And Cheryl Griffin, present.
Thank you very much.
And Jorrell Davis.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to let you know our superintendent had an emergency tonight, so she will not be here tonight. Just wanted to let everybody know that. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the goodness for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please turn your cell phones off for on vibration. And we're gonna pause for a moment of silence. This particular moment, silence would be dedicated to our superintendent and her family at this moment. So thank you in advance. Thank you very much, everyone. Board member.
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor and privilege to introduce these amazing young ladies and this amazing educator. It is such an interesting topic and important because we know about what's going on in Ukraine. I want to pass it on to our amazing fifth grade ELA teacher, Ms. Jones, and her amazing students.
Good evening. My name is Ebony Jones, a proud Lindup fifth grade teacher. Our fifth grade students were given an amazing but heartfelt opportunity from Mr. Laskew that Jada and Alisa will explain after this video. Thank you very much, and here is our video.
Hi, my name is Jolissa, and a question I have for you today is, what do you do to distract yourself from everything that is currently happening in Ukraine?
Hello, my name is Nastia, and I'm ten years old. I am from Ukraine. And before the war, I live in Kiev. And I'm glad to be here with you. So I like painting, so I paint. I paint different pictures of, for example, what happened before and after the war.
Thank you for your response.
Hello, my name is Adriana, and a question I have for you today is, are you still able to go to school? If not, how are you learning?
I don't go to school because it's dangerous. I study online school in Google class, and in my school now it was a shelter.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jada, and a question I have for you today is, how was your life before the war? What is different now? Is your family well?
Hi, hello, my name is Milana, and I have a busy and interesting life before because I have lessons every day. I had painting lessons too, I had music lessons. And on Sunday, I had scout lessons where we went to the forest and where we help and feed animals.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael. My question is for you is, how do you feel about the war?
Well, I feel sad because so many children are killed. I feel disappointed because grownups up don't hear, don't understand, and they can't agree with us. And I angry because I don't understand why.
Thank you for your response.
Hi, my name is Micah, and my question is, how has your home been impacted by the war?
I live in Kiev, so luckily my house wasn't too much impacted.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Keenan, and what do you do for fun nowadays?
I can play at my phone, or I can talk to my friends on the phone.
Thank you for your response.
Hi, my name is Charlotte, and my question for you today is, how are you and your family staying safe?
When we hear sirens, we must not go out and we hide in the shelter.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josiah, and my question for you is, are you able to hear gunfire or explosions while in hiding?
Well, when we was in Kiev, we heard some gunfire, some explosions, and we saw big planes.
Hi, my name is Ellis, and the question that I have for you today is, do you plan to leave Ukraine? And if you do plan to leave, how would you leave?
Well, I don't know, maybe in future. I don't see.
Thank you for the response.
Hi, my name is Kennedy, and the question for you I have for you today is, are you scared?
I try to be not scared because if I panic, it can't help me. We must be brave.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Imani, and my question is, did you ever have to leave any pets behind?
Well, I have cats, like parts, like Simpson. I have a hamster and I have a snail. And they stay at Kiev, but with my father, we live them, but I miss them.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michaela, and my question is, if you have three wishes, what would they be?
I wish the war stopped, I wish, of course, the war stopped, and I wish our country stays safe.
I want the war stopped. I want to have money to help Ukraine, and I want to come back to home to Kiev.
Hi, my name is Elisa, and my question for you is, what is your biggest fear?
Before the war, I was afraid of spiders, but now my fear is the war because a lot of children died.
Hi, my name is Monica. How did you escape from Kiev to where you are now, and was it scary?
Now I am in Uzhgorod, is a city in Ukraine. We left Kiev on train. It was crowded and it was hard to breathe. We were in train eighteen hours. We can't sleep or do something else. Just sitting and waiting when train came to Uzhgorod. It was scary because I don't know when I can come back home.
Thank you.
Hello, I escaped from Kiev by train too. It was scary because so many people was, and train before us was detected. And it was so sad to say goodbye to my father and to their family.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alicia. Our entire fifth grade class has been studying the escalation of war in Ukraine. We are fortunate enough to be able to do more to allow the girls to move on. We so amazing and courageous now for forcing them to go home in Kiev. Thank you. My classmates and I created a list of questions to ask a girl about their feelings, work, schoolwork, and safety. The drawing you saw in the video was from one of the girls, which depicted how beautiful Ukraine was before and how sad and dark Ukraine is now. There was also a cat that saved all of Ukraine. Thank you very much for this.
Do board members have any comments?
My only comment is, kids are so resilient, and my heart just goes out. You can't explain it. It's a lot.
I would like to say that I think you guys did a wonderful job. You showed them that people in other countries do care about them, and that you were willing to find out exactly what their feelings were as they're going through these trying times. I commend you for that. It comes to mind, or my mind, that I don't even know if you realize the impact of this experience on your lives. This is a moment in history that we're never gonna forget. And you all had the opportunity to speak with kids that are really going through something unimaginable. So just thank you for allowing us to see what you guys experienced, but thank you for allowing them to experience it. How were you able to even connect this experience? That's the question I have for you, teacher.
We did a lot of talking about the position that we're in, that we're very blessed and humbled to be able to go to school and have our families with us because as they saw that these two girls are separated from their family, and they want to be back home. And this put in perspective for all of us in the classroom, especially the children, to understand what these children are doing with their babies.
And to hear they're living in a shelter, you know, in war. I was scared of spiders. I'm afraid of war now. Definitely impactful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Laskew, because he's the one that connected this for us.
Give Mr. Laskew a hand. Thank you, Mr. Laskew. He's always behind the scenes, leading. Thank you again. Thank you, ladies. Thank you so much for being here. Excellent presentation.
Madam President, before we move on.
Right here.
I would be remiss not to say anything about that. Ms. Jones, good job. Ladies, good job. The entire fifth grade class, great job. That's something, young ladies, that like our board president said, you guys will never forget that. As you guys get older, you guys start to have kids. That'll be something that you tell your own children. Like when you guys read, or when they read about this war in Ukraine, when they get to school and in the grade that you guys are, you're gonna be able to tell them like, hey, I spoke to a young lady who was living that there in the time when this all happened. So that was amazing. That definitely made me feel some type of way sitting up here. I don't know about my colleagues, but I'm sure it all did. It hit all of us the same way. That was awesome. That was awesome.
Before we move on, Madam President, seriously, girls, they have all spoke so highly of you, and we have all mentioned how important this is. They're, as she said, they're children over there who have passed away due to this war. And you all had the courage and had the empathy that some adults don't possess to go and to speak to those children. And I don't want to get too emotional because I still gotta keep a good face for the rest of the meeting. But you all are truly amazing. Ms. Jones, thank you for giving them this opportunity, and Mr. Laskew. This is truly Lindup excellence and Broadview excellence as we see you.
Well said. Thank you again. Okay, moving right along to public comments. And we do have one public comment. Please come up to the podium, Ms. Cecilia Mendoza, as well as Mr. Baranik.
Good evening, Board of Education, staff members, and community members. I would like to introduce Ms. Mendoza. She is being recommended tonight for the administrative assistant to the superintendent and board secretary. We are truly pleased to bring her in front of the board, and I'm really looking forward to working with her. We all are looking forward to it. She just has a few words that she would like to say.
Good afternoon, everybody. First of all, thank you for allowing me this time to be here, to be present, and to introduce myself. My name is Cecilia Mendoza, Ceci for short. Usually I just go by Ceci. I have a history of having worked in the educational field for twenty-seven years now. I started back in nineteen ninety-five in a neighborhood district, District eighty-eight, where I was for twenty years. Moved on to West Forty and then Pace. Right now, I have this great opportunity that presented itself, you know, for me to come and serve here. My calling is to serve the community. I am a product of Maywood. I grew up in Maywood. I graduated from Proviso East back in nineteen ninety. I'm looking forward to that. I am passionate about helping people, especially those who have a barrier with the language, as it was what my parents had to deal with. I understand that working on this level requires a lot of confidentiality, a loyalty, not only to the district but also to the families in the community. So I will welcome the opportunity to serve and to work here with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We have another public comment. I was told that you'd... Mayor Thompson?
Good evening, Board of Education and community. I know, I think you had a write-in for your public comment, but you guys didn't have one.
Yeah, we apologize. We just kind of got thrown off a little bit tonight. So thank you.
Well, first and foremost, I do want to say to the fifth grade class that had the conversation with the Ukrainian, good job. Because when we educate our kids on international foreign policy, this shows the translation that we have that is just not a local issue that we train our young people on. So I commend the fifth grade class and the teachers that took the time out to bring that foreign policy to fruition in the village of Broadview. Secondly, I went on the website yesterday, and I noticed on the agenda you guys are gonna be discussing the referendum. And so the question that I have as it relates to the referendum, my expectation, not only am I the mayor of the village, but I'm also a taxpayer and live at District ninety-two with two properties. And so I wanted to be just real transparent with the board of, you know, be transparent in the conversation of what the ask is for the taxpayers. Every year, the tax levy is raised, which increases our property taxes to those levies. And I get a ton of phone calls as it relates to the taxes being raised, and it's not on the municipal side. It's usually from the school districts, District ninety-two and District two oh nine. So when we talk about this referendum, I want to know more about what the referendum is, what it's about, is it gonna impact our taxes? Are our taxes gonna stay stagnant? What is the referendum? Because nobody knows. It's like it's a silent thing that only Lindup Board Education knows and not the community. So I just want to have a transparent conversation when the discussion come online on what it is that the ask is for the community. Because they're gonna be calling me. They're gonna be calling me, and I don't know what's going on. So that's all. I just, you know, just be accountable, be transparent to the people that live here that's gotta pay the taxes. I think Lindup is doing a tremendous job in executing the plan. We have a wonderful superintendent that's been holding it down during this pandemic. We can't, we can't make staff stay, especially when they have opportunities. We've had turnover in the village of Broadview as it relates to fire and police. So it's just, it's just a great recession of turnover and personnel. So we can't hold people accountable to the things that's happened that's beyond our control. But we can be accountable to how we had this conversation when it comes to property taxes. There are several conversations taking on how people can appeal their property taxes, so it's a big deal. It's a big deal to the average person. Food is going up, gas is going up, rent is going up. And, you know, can we continue to stay stagnant, or can we afford the referendum, whatever it is that's being proposed? So I'm curious to know what that is. I did put out on social media, those that live in District ninety-two, you know, get the information for yourself. Be informed, be educated on what the referendum is. Don't believe me. You know, forget it for him, get the information, and articulate the conversation on what's best for you and your family, if it's something that you guys need us to get behind. So thank you.
Thank you. I do want to just mention that it's something that, this referendum is something that I think our team, our board team also had to really learn and understand and agree upon. And so we literally have a committee that's making sure that they partner with the right people, that makes sure that we have everything clear to the community so we understand and we ready. So one thing that the community should know, every single board member here, we own property as well. So we wanted to be transparent because we needed to be, because we are you. We are you. So it's gonna be transparent, it's gonna be clear. We need, we're gonna need you also. So there'll be more information to come. Okay? Is there another person that needed to, that had a public comment? Is there someone else? I apologize for not having the comments out there tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. Now, good evening. My name is Clarissa Gillespie. I have a second grader and a first grade grandson here in Linda. First, I want to say, Lindup has been amazing. The pandemic, I'm a teacher in District two oh nine. And one of the things that, we've just come off strike, and one of the things that I wanted to make sure that I came out to see was how a board actually operates. So I really want to thank you for having information being clear, and as the mayor mentioned before, that promise of transparency when it comes to the dealings of the Board of Education, as well as how it affects community members and taxpayers. I really don't have anything long to say. I just want to say thank you for, I'm happy to avoid that function tonight.
Thank you for being here tonight. Is there any other comments? Again, we apologize for not having the comment sheets out. We kind of had a different kind of day. Thank you all again. Moving on to FOIA requests. Mr. Baranik?
Yes, we received one FOIA request from ABC Channel seven in regards to challenge books for our current library. We did formulate a response and sent it off to ABC seven, and the FOIA has been satisfied.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from board members? There are none. Moving right on to upcoming events and correspondence. Our board secretary, Mr. Hanna.
Okay, I have no correspondence, and the upcoming events are printed before you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the consent agenda, please. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve the consent agenda, including the Lindup District ninety-two payroll from March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two through April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of four hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and six cents. Lindup District ninety-two accounts payable for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two through April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of two thousand, excuse me, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Activity reconciliation, account reconciliation for April twenty twenty-two. Regular open session meeting minutes for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and regular closed session meeting minutes for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, as presented.
Thank you. And a second, please.
A second, Hannah.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or revisions? There are none. Roll call, please. Ms. Griffin, and thank you.
Yes. Okay. Carla John-Herret.
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna.
Yay.
Tanya Taylor.
Yay.
Penny Williams-Wolffert, absent. Woody Morris. Brian Dawson, absent.
Motion carries. Moving on to whole business. Need a recommendation to dispose of obsolete technology, please?
Board member Hanna, I make a motion that the board approve to dispose of obsolete technology to be offered to Lindup Community free of charge on a date to be determined in June of twenty twenty-two, as presented.
And a second, please.
A second. Tanya Taylor.
Any further discussion? I know that we talked a lot about this last time. Okay, there are none. Roll call, please.
Carla John-Herret.
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna.
Yay.
Tanya Taylor.
Yay.
Woody Morris. Penny Williams-Wolffert, absent. Brian Dawson, absent.
Motion carries. Discussion on referendum. Mr. Baranik. It was Mr. Rannick and Dr. Jackson, so you... Oh, sorry. Sorry, hold on for a second.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Financial update on solar energy. That's you, Mr. Baranik.
All right. So we finally were able to get the solar panels up and running. We went through a lot of turmoil trying to get this one kilowatt system going in the back of our school for our renewable energy initiative. The original company that we had come out went out of business, so we had to find another consultant to come out, another vendor, to get this thing up and running. They actually had to rewire everything, get all new inverters. The inverters were at least three generations old compared to what the current standard is. So all that has been updated, new wiring. We have a public link now available out there, so you're able to see this at all times. Mr. Laskew has worked a lot of hours on this with the company called Endphase, which is the end product. They get the solar panels up and running so that we can see this public link. The public link is pretty cool, where you can see the four panels, see what type of energy that it's producing. It actually has then some parts on the website where you can click, and it would say, "Our solar panels are able to power the following items for this long." So it's pretty interesting when we get to it. We haven't gotten into the meat and potatoes of the curriculum stuff yet, but we're just happy that this is finally up and running. The one thing that I want to mention to the board is that this is a reimbursable grant that we had, the K-12 Solar. It is a ninety-ten reimbursement. The state will reimburse us ninety percent. We're on the hook for ten percent, up to a total of sixty-five hundred dollars. So we do have the cost breakdown up there for the board to see out there what our portion was. But I'm just glad that we got this thing up and running because it kind of turned into a nightmare to get four panels going. But I'm excited to, you know, get them finally going and turn this into a learning experience for our kids.
Wow.
So our next update, well, do we have any questions in regards to the solar?
Right here. Thank you.
So our next update that we would like to give is on the cafeteria grant. Early, I'd say, I want to say maybe January. Early, I'd say, I want to say maybe January, we submitted a FY twenty-three cafeteria equipment grant. To replace our double oven down in the kitchen. Our oven is from two thousand two, two thousand three. So if you do remember, we received the FY twenty-one equipment grant and did a lot of updates down in the kitchen for.
Change being. Uh, it's.
It changed. Did it change it?
It didn't. It, it changed, but it went back.
That's okay. Oh, there we go. But we'll go back to that. But I'm just saying, we did get awarded this pending state allocation of dollars. I have been in contact with our state rep, Emily Durbin. She believes that the money will be there for districts to utilize. On the reimbursement basis, the grant was for thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So we'll have to put forth the money for that, submitted to the state for reimbursement. This purchase wouldn't be purchased until after July one, when it's official for the next grant period with it. But. Good news for us, like you said, another piece of equipment updated down in the kitchen. So we have been trying to get that updated. Um, to the best of our ability so that we can do different things with creating healthy. Uh, lunches for our kids and even open up our opportunities to expand our lunches for our kids. So it's a positive thing that we have uh, with getting this um, grant. The next thing that I want to go over, oh, I'm sorry, any questions?
There are none. Go right ahead.
Okay, so the next thing, you know, I do want to kinda go over is we did receive our interest pool amount from the Township Treasurer. Not as good news as the cafeteria grant and the solar stuff. Um, as we know, times are kind of iffy out there with inflation and return on investment. Uh, the one thing that I want to mention is, is that we were receiving point one five percent on the pooled money. And that's all the districts within the Proviso Township Treasurer. So all the different districts, all the pooled money. Not the outcome that we wanted. We knew it was gonna be low. We knew that upfront from the treasurer. Um, that, you know, be careful with how you budget for this. The interest that you're going to get for this pooled year is gonna be low. So on the screen is what we currently got. In FY twenty-two on the interest and then historical interest from the treasurer. We're definitely low with it, but that's just what the yields are out there for interest payments when they invest in treasury bonds. They try to be as safe as they can. So that the districts aren't on the hook for a lot of stuff. So these are investing in very secure, secure stuff. Where you're not going to lose a lot of money. So we do have some good news, but we have some bad news. Just to be transparent, we did not make as much interest on the pooled money for this year with the Township Treasurer. And obviously, historical will show how things fluctuate when times are good and your return is two, three, three and a half percent. The pooled interest, the township made a lot of money. Therefore, then the school district's amount of interest is significantly higher. But this year, unfortunately, not where we want to be.
We still had a gain.
We still gained. That is, that's a positive thing too. And we didn't lose anything. And I know, like you said, I appreciate the township being very upfront. And telling us as we work on developing budgets. Each year, year after year, they're upfront with it. We're probably not gonna invest, invest as much money as we did because the yields are so low. So they were upfront with it.
Are there any questions? Okay, there are none. Go right ahead, Mr. Baranik. Uh, discussion on referendum.
Okay, we have been talking about the referendum now for several months on it. Uh, we are to the next phase that we really have to get the committee active. Get various things out there for the public on it. If we go to the next slide. We kinda have our next main points that we have to do here. We have to schedule a bond referendum committee. Create informational documents to share with the public in a town hall presentation. Schedule two different town hall meetings because not everyone's gonna be able to attend the first one. So we're gonna have to give some flexibility to the community to be able to present our information in regards to our referendum. The board um, will have on our district website. A referendum link that will go into very, very detailed. Documents that show exactly how this is going to impact the taxpayers. How it's going to impact the school district. We're gonna have an FAQ out there, all of our presentations. But we're also gonna have a link to where we're gonna encourage the public to register to vote. Um, the key thing that I want to mention on this referendum, the question is going to look a little different than a normal referendum. We're not actually gonna say we're looking to get X amount of dollars to work on something. We are gonna be asking to extend our debt service extension and create one. Which is basically taking our current payment that we have and extending it out for an additional twenty years, keeping the exact same payment. Which will allow the district then to bond out to get approximately six million to six point five million, depending on the rates that are out there. And the key thing that I want to tell the public, this is a non-tax increase. We are not asking for any additional funds. We are not asking to raise their taxes. All we're asking to do is to extend our debt service extension base and create a debt service extension base with the exact same payment. Which will then allow us to bond out, keep that same payment. And this will help us address capital projects, um, like replacing roofs, addressing electrical issues, mechanical issues. These are all the things that we have to do to tighten up our infrastructure before we can start working on. Getting everything tidied up with the curriculum pieces inside. And as part of this, the one mainstay that we want to do is update our library. You're gonna see pictures of what our current library looks like and then we have pictures from our architect. On what current libraries look like. And we want to show the public and the community the difference. Between what we currently have and where we want to get to. So we do have a big chunk of change. That we are hoping to utilize within this referendum when we bond out to get the money to really update the library and make that the cornerstone of Lindott. That's the main thing on it. So we do have a lot of things that are moving. We're moving in the right direction. We do have a committee meeting that is, I believe, being held tomorrow. Where we have draft documents, draft presentation, and then we're gonna tidy up the dates so that we can have the public um, town hall meetings. So a lot of things moving in the right direction. And the one thing that I want to stress is. This is the exact same payment that we currently have and all we're trying to do is extend it out. And create this debt service extension base with a no tax increase to the Broadview residents.
Thank you for getting started on this. I know we talked about also having the community engagement uh, committee initiated because we're all gonna be a part of this. You know, so it goes hand in hand with our uh, and our community engagement committee, everybody's on it, you know? Um, this particular refer, referendum committee, our leads are uh. Brian, Mr. Mr. Brian Dawson, as well as Mr. Hannah. There are two leads. There are two uh, committee leads on this particular committee. So they'll be leading the way, but we'll all be working on it together. So thank you all for laying the foundation. We know it's a. Go right ahead.
Um, the link that's being placed on the internet. I assume that it's gonna be, there's gonna be a simplified, you know, basically like a summary of things where it's like, say, the average person going to that link on, looking through the referendum. Is not gonna say have to go through like, say, twenty pages to get to find out what things are. It's gonna be a simplified version for them.
The goal is right on the very top right-hand corner, we're gonna have a link that just says referendum. And you'll click right on that referendum link and it's gonna take you to the presentation, the financial presentation. Um, the life safety document that we got from our architect, identifying everything that needs to be addressed within the next two to five years. You're also gonna see a timeline of how Mr. Ballantyne and myself were trying to plan. The process of which priority items are our number one initiatives as we move forward with this. That will be on there. You're also gonna see pictures in the presentation of what roofing section needs to be done. You're gonna take a look at some of the mechanical issues that we're gonna have to have. We want to be transparent with the pictures and show this is what needs to be addressed. So you're gonna see also then tuck pointing areas of the building that have been passed off on our last two life safety. Reports that needs to be addressed. So you're gonna see pictures of what it should look like and what it currently looks like. So. Everyone's gonna be able to see all these different items. You're also gonna be able to see in that presentation. What our current state of our library looks like and what some of the new trends are with new stuff and how we can get our library to look like that. We want to have as much information as we can at the community's disposal and the residents disposals to make it as easy as possible to get to it. So we'll be just one link. You're not gonna have to go under this tab, click this tab, go to this tab. I know it gets, you know, kinda tough sometimes navigate websites. We want to make it. Clear, simple, and just click on the link with it saying referendum.
That's good. Thank you.
Any other board members have comments? All right, I won't belabor. We have two months. Uh, it's gonna go back quick. All right.
I, I, I do, I, so I'm just kinda mad, Tanya Taylor. I just want to make sure that um. In a, in a space of being transparent as a board, we are telling the community that their taxes are not being increased.
Correct for the referendum.
Okay. Thank you.
And we will have a town hall meeting for the community to address any questions or comments about it as well, correct?
Correct. We will have two meetings scheduled um, on different uh, dates. We're hoping to have potentially two evening ones. And if the committee says maybe have a Saturday one, we could have a Saturday one too, but that's all dependent upon the committee ironing out the details.
All right. Thank you.
Good work.
Update and discussion of Blue Ribbon Pathway. That's Dr. Betts. Good evening, Dr. Betts.
Good evening, board and staff and community. I have Miss O with me as well because she and I have been working together tremendously on this project. So she's just gonna say a few words first.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. Good evening, community members. Thank you all for being here. So I want you to know that the Blue Ribbon Survey, hundred percent completion by teachers, hundred percent completion by the administration, hundred percent completion by students. Parents have started and now we are up to, I just refreshed, we're up to twenty-five percent of our parents have completed it. One per household, so twenty-five percent of our parents have completed this survey. Very happy about.
Um, well, I just um, was going to mention that we are working on the surveys and then in May, we're really excited because through this data collection process. We're planning some focus groups at the very beginning of May. So we'll be involving most of our staff members in those focus groups over the course of one to two days. Uh, and then we will have some really deep dive data um, that will help us to build out a strategy and a pathway to Blue Ribbon. We'll be able to define it and we'll be able to benchmark our steps along the way. We anticipate there's nine different pathways to Blue Ribbon. We anticipate that we'll fall into either instruction or school supports. Either way, one pushes the other. So if, if we go down the instruction pathway, it's gonna push the school support pathway too. We're gonna become. Better in both areas and vice versa. So we're really looking forward to this. Um, and this O has just been tremendous in helping motivate us to get these surveys done. So thank you so much and thank you for your support with us. And right now, we're right at thirty percent. So thank you.
Ms. O, I've got a question for you. Tell us how you got all the students to do that survey. Come on, tell us.
Teachers.
Okay.
So really my relationship with my teachers, I went to my teachers and I asked them, there are two right there. And can you do the survey? What are we gonna do? And then the teachers have also done incentives for the parents.
Uh huh, exactly. Smart, smart.
Children can receive um, homework passes and for extra credit towards where they need it. So yeah, it's worth doing it.
That is wonderful. We, we have Blue Ribbon, the future Blue Ribbon School out on that, you know, on that, what is it, on the marquee. Because we have to see that it's, that we really can do it. You, you know, and explain how it's done. Some people don't think we can do it. Can. You set a goal, you, you path it out and get everybody motivated to con, conquer that goal. Thank you so much. For making it real.
Thank you.
Update on di, data and discipline, Mr. Ballantyne and Mr. Kenobi.
Good evening, Board of Education, community and staff. We're working on the LED project we've been working on here at the school. We started this back in two thousand and seventeen. We broke it down into three phases. We started with the gym and then the exterior lights. We started that because they was burning the most wattage. Uh, then we finished up recently, we had the whole part and finished up classrooms and all upcoming areas. As you can see on this chart, we already seen our turning investment on the gymnasium and the exterior lights. This is just one initiative. We're trying to work here at the school to achieve greater status. So we are constantly looking for more ways to save in uh, ways in the school and uh, keep trying to implement those here at the school. Any questions?
Thank you.
Comment, great work.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I have my monthly uh, discipline update. You know, I'm very passionate uh, about this, this area. And even though there's, you know, there's trials and tribulations and it goes from month to month. Again, it takes the effort of not just myself, but the faculty and staff. And I got a guardian angel next to me now, Miss, Mrs. Apari Sephoro, my old third grade uh, colleague, old uh, work wife. Uh, back with me. So you can all imagine. My energy plus her. So it's, it's a breath of fresh air working with her. Um, and then with the discipline with the, with the students, it's an ongoing thing from month to month and it's committee work. It's working with the teachers, it's working with the students. And as I go through my presentation, as you see some of these uh, graphics that I go through, you're gonna see uh, numbers that are in the decline. We are still down forty percent since the beginning of the school year. Even though you're gonna see in March, you're gonna see upticks in discipline. And that's, that's predictable because every month, things are gonna change. Uh, case by cases, what students are gonna change, you know, there's a lot of outside factors that can come within. But the fact that matters is if you talk to, if you talk to the staff and discuss the data and pinpoint. And you realize some of these are in isolated incidences with the kids that normally never happen, right, month to month. Or you have certain students that account for eighty-three percent of the referrals for the month, you can target interventions, right? You can get more intense with your faculty. And that's the things that we are gonna do and continuing to do. The Positive Behavior Intervention Support uh, Committee saw this data. You have the psychologist there, the social worker that, there, you have teachers there. So are we looking into the future about universal systems that we currently have in place that maybe we need to tweak? We need to look at the code of conduct and the way that's the language in the code of conducts. Have, have our language, have our children shifted so much for the pandemic. That we need to change certain things of the code of conduct that align more so with the needs. Do some of the groups. For, for more restorative, consequential, yes, there, there has to be rewards and consequences. But can we look more? As we go to the blue ribbon status about being more restorative. And I'm very interested in seeing, having an outside perspective about these things of improving things with restorative discipline. Parent engagement, not involvement, parent engagement. How does that look? And I'm very, very curious about what that data in the surveys are gonna show. But these are some of the things that, from the data that we're pulling. What are our major heavy hitter categories? What percentages are we seeing in the month? What are we currently having our code of conduct that's considered restorative practice versus consequences? Right? Because they go hand in hand. If a child is getting a consequence, what's the restorative piece? Because you want to repair that relationship with the child. The teacher, the relationships between kids. Because we all, we all knew that we, we had, we had things happening this year coming out of a pandemic. But you don't really know, right? Some of these things as an administrator are very meaningful learning experiences. When you're dealing with the needs of children, the needs of staff, the needs of everyone. So it's a very enlightening opportunity. And like we said, fut- Future Blue Ribbon School, I'm very, I see it. Like, we can get there. I've been here, this is seventeen years. I keep reminding myself, I'm turning forty this, this year and I'm like, wow, where did everything go? But the thing is, like, we all, we all know, we, Lindup is very special. It's a gem, right? So I, I really wanna see it flourish. And there's things that we can change to get better, including myself and everybody else. But I'm still happy with the discipline because I, I know that everybody sees it. There's no hiding it. The staff have their hands on it, right? The parents see it. I wanna get the parents more involved coming out of the fall with intentional meetings, coaching. Maybe they need training on restorative SCL. Cause maybe they're dealing with behaviors that they've never seen out of, other, their children before and they're looking for answers. So those are the types of things that we're looking at a- as a committee that we're talking to teachers about. We're looking for future trainings. So I just wanna pass that information along to you, to the board, because it's all about transparency. If we wanna get to that overall goal, we have to be realistic of what we're, what we're dealing with. So thank you. Any questions or concerns?
I do have one thing. When we are, because I love that you said we're gonna, you know, you noticed that there needs to be some innovations in the code of conduct and other places. Which involve our policies. Can we see if we can get a student in or, no, a student in those committee meetings? To kind of give you their inside view on things, on some discipline? Or where we can improve on with discipline and restorative practices and everything?
Sure, that's, you know, we had some students attend the PBIS just to look at the universal systems in place. But you hit the nail on the head, Jorrell, or Mr. David. Sorry, old former second grade student over there.
You're the only one right now.
I still love you, buddy. But the fact is, is that discipline, it all goes hand in hand. PBIS, you, you have the multi-tiered uh, systems of support, tier one, tier two, tier three. Like behaviors, you know, go through tiers too. So you, you have to align and talk to Ms. Kiefer. Wow, just amazing. This nice perspective coming into Lindup, just with experience that she has. She's, we're going into a third version of the code of conduct. Cause we're piecing it apart of what she sees and what needs, and how that flows into the MTSS framework. So to answer your question, the perspective is needed. From a student perspective, absolutely. Great question. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Kenobi.
You're welcome.
Moving right along, new business. Need a recommendation to approve the special open session meeting minutes, please?
Board Member Hannah, I make a motion to approve the special open session meeting minutes for March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
And a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Any revisions, any comments? If there are none, roll call, please.
Carla Jonah Harret.
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna?
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor?
I abstain, I was uh, working. That evening, sorry.
Woody Morris? Penny Williams Wolford, absent. And Brian Dawson, absent.
I abstain, I wasn't there.
Motion carries. Need a recommendation to approve the closed session meeting minutes, please?
Board Member Hannah, I make a motion to approve the special closed session meeting minutes for March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
And a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Any comments, revisions? There are none, roll call, please?
Carl Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna?
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor?
I abstain, again, I'm sorry, I was working that evening.
Woody Morris? Penny Williams Wolford is absent, Brian Dawson is absent.
I abstain.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the special open session meeting minutes for uh, March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. I think I just made that motion. I need a second.
I second, Board Member Hannah.
This is different meeting, right?
Yes. April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Any revisions at all, comments?
Erin second that.
I did.
Any revisions? None. Roll call, please.
Carla Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna?
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor?
We have a error. Number three says open session minute meeting for March, April thirteenth.
Oh, I see.
What?
It was April thirteenth. That was our special board meeting that we just recently had.
We had two of them. So where's the error, sorry?
We have one for March twenty-ninth and one for April thirteenth, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then I, I missed both. So March twenty-ninth, I was present.
So we'll, we'll just uh,
So you're gonna,
We rescind that motion?
Right.
We rescind that motion and um, Who made that motion?
Uh, Erin did.
Erin, can you rescind the motion, please? And then uh, we'll initiate it again.
Okay, I rescind that motion.
Okay. Can you make a motion, please, to approve uh, the special meeting for March twenty-nine?
Okay, are we doing, you want me to do open and closed? Um, I make a motion to approve the special open session meeting minutes for March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
And a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Any revisions? There are none, roll call, please?
Carla Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna?
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor?
Yay.
Woody Morris? Penny Williams Wolford is absent and Brian Dawson is absent. Board Member David?
I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Now we need another motion to, for the closed session, please?
I make a motion to approve the special closed session meeting minutes for March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
And a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
No revisions as before, roll call, please?
Carla Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna?
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor?
Yay.
Woody Morris? Penny Williams Wolford is absent and Brian Dawson is absent.
I abstain.
Okay. Motion carries. So we did the other two. Did we do those?
Well, number three and four.
I think we stopped. Okay, so let's, I need a motion, please, for the special board meetings for thirteen. Go right ahead, Mr. Hannah or anyone.
I make a motion to approve the special open session meeting minutes for April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
And a second, please?
Um, Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Any revisions at all? There are none, roll call, please?
Carla Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna?
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor?
Abstain.
Woody Morris? Court, Student Board Member David?
I abstain.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Penny Williams Wolford and Brian Dawson are absent.
Motion carries. Need a motion for this closing session?
I make a motion to approve the special closed session meeting minutes for March, I mean, excuse me, for April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
And a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Any revisions? There are none, roll call, please?
Carla Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna?
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor?
Abstain.
Penny Williams Wolford is absent, Woody Morris?
Yeah.
Brian Dawson is absent. Student School Board Member David?
I abstain.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. We got through it. Recommended first read, need a motion, please, to approve the first read. Anybody?
I recommend first read approval and adoption of review dates for the review and monitor cycle section, session seven. Student Policies, Students for Policy seventeen, seven fifteen, seven twenty, seven thirty, seven forty. Seven fifty, seven sixty, seven seventy, seven eighty, seven ninety. Seven one thirty, seven one hun- seven one forty, seven one fifty, seven one sixty, seven one seventy. Seven one eighty, seven one eighty-five, seven one ninety, seven two hundred. Seven two ten, seven two twenty, seven two thirty, seven two forty, seven two fifty, seven two sixty. Seven two seventy, seven two seventy-five, seven two eighty, seven two eighty-five. Seven two ninety, seven three hundred, seven three oh five, seven three ten, seven three twenty-five. Seven three forty and seven three forty-five as presented.
I think you missed one. Just kidding.
Don't start.
And a second, please?
I second, Board Member Hannah.
Okay, any comments, any uh, any comments at all, Mr. Berannick? I know we don't have a policy person here. You all get a chance to review the board um, uh, board docs. I think everybody did. So without further to do, need a roll call, please?
Carla Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna?
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor?
Yay.
Penny Williams Wolford, absent. Woody Morris?
Yeah.
Brian Dawson, absent. Student Board Member David?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion carry. Okay. Moving right along, need a motion to approve the first read.
I make a motion to approve the first read of section seven, Student for Policy seven one hundred. With edits, with edits as presented.
And a second.
I second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please?
Carla Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna?
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor?
Yay.
Penny Williams Wolford, absent. Woody Morris?
Yeah.
Brian Dawson, absent. Student Board Member Jorrell David?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Need a recommendation to approve of the CEP program, please?
I make a motion to approve, to apply for a community eligibility provision, CEP program. For the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, school year as presented.
And a second, please?
Hannah, I second.
Mr. Lesku, the man behind the scenes. He's so unassuming, guys, but he is a powerhouse.
Good evening, Board Education, Community Members, Staff. So this is me Lindup's third time applying for CEP. And so we have to apply for every four years. It's free food for all the students, they eat for free. Um, that we get, we can also get discounts on E-rate, which is ninety percent of the equipment. So we're on top of applying for E-rate, eighty-five percent for our equipment. And then we also get free grants as well with the program for CEP. It actually, um, this is our data for the CEP that we're having right now. I try to get to a hundred percent, but we have to go through each individual student and see if they're, have, have benefits. Do SNAP or TANF or Medicaid, that's how it's based on. And so we're about, it'll be about five percent. And that'd be about ten to fifteen cents per meal, which is about thirty-five dollars per day. If, if I don't get to a hundred percent. But that's where we're at right now. Questions?
I think there are. I know that, uh, just to mention to the community, we didn't even know about E-rate until uh, Mr. Lesku got here. So just appreciate everything you do for this district, Mr. Lesku. Thank you. Recommendation to uh, apply for the Freedom Schools Grant. Am I missing something? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You absolutely like roll call, I mean, uh, yeah, roll call. Thank you.
Carla Jonah Harret?
Absolutely, yes.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna?
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor?
Yay.
Penny Williams Wolford, absent. Woody Morris?
Yeah.
Brian Dawson, absent. Student School Board Member David?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And recommendation to approve or to apply for the Freedom Schools Grant?
I make a motion to approve, to apply for the Freedom School Grant in collaboration with the Village Free Press. Uh, to address civic engagement, racial justice and equity and self-determination. And governance in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand as presented.
I second, Board Member.
Hold on, we have a second. Okay, presenters, Dr. Betts, Mr. Berannick.
Good evening, again, Board Members, Staff, Administration, Community. We are so excited for the opportunity that the state of Illinois is providing. There is a seventeen million dollar um, grant uh, being offered to anyone. Specific agencies or school districts that would like to apply for it. And we could potentially um, apply for up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To run a summer freedom school that would address civic engagement, racial justice and equity. And self-determination. Um, and it would be something where we really focus on literacy growth for our students. And growth of our family and community engagement. And the really amazing thing about this too is that so many community agencies would be working together to do this. So with um, Mr. Michael Romey from the Village Free Press and Mayor Katrina Thompson. Um, as well as several other agencies from the community, we are working towards writing this grant right now. Uh, we have a meeting to review some of the writing tomorrow and to figure out next steps and what we need to do. But it's something that we all just feel really passionately about. And that's why we're recommending um, that you would approve our ability to apply for this.
Thank you.
Just wanna mention that uh, Mayor Thompson is always behind the scenes. Always behind the scenes. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Oh my God. Oh my God. Any questions, any, any, any questions for any board members?
What grade levels would that be available to?
So we are looking at um, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade. We were looking at doing this kind of like a pilot initially. So forty students, ten per grade level. There would be one teacher and two teaching assistants. There would be mentorship included. Um, obviously, you know, we would need, you know, an administrator of the school. We would need to have custodial staff, lunch staff. Um, we would be looking for, you know, potentially volunteers to come into this as well. There would be elements of um, restorative justice practices. So kind of tapping into some of the things that Mr. Kenobi also was speaking about. But we think that, you know, it could grow. Also, I don't know if I mentioned, we would be recruiting our teachers from proviso township. So the grant does require us to tap into our local resources. We just know that this could just really be a great opportunity. And there are so many things about this that really could be infused into the instructional program even here at Lindup eventually.
Yeah, one quick question.
Right ahead.
Would this run simultaneously with summer school or would it go past summer school? So summer school is typ- typically about five weeks. Where would this uh, program run?
So this program, um, this program would, would not be running here at Lindup. There is another location to be determined. We've talked about a couple of different spaces where we would do this. We would be recruiting our students from Lindup as well as from Roosevelt Middle School. Um, so that we're calling this the Broadview Freedom School.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is using Broadview students in the district and out of the district as well? The ones who live in Broadview, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Dr. Betts, thank you much. I won't forget this one, roll call, please? I don't forget three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm sorry.
Carla Jonah Harret?
Yeah.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna?
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor?
Yay.
Penny Williams Wolford, absent. Woody Morris? Brian Dawson is absent and School Board Member Jorrell David?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Thank you, thank you again for backing us up out there. Mayor Thompson?
Right.
Moving right along, Summer School STEM. Need a motion, please, to approve the twenty twenty-two Summer School STEM?
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two. I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two Summer School STEM for grades K eight to be held at Lindop Monday through Thursday, June sixth, to June thirtieth, eight AM breakfast, and instructions to begin at eight twenty-five AM through twelve fifty-five PM at a total cost not to exceed fifty-two thousand, seven hundred, forty-three dollars, including staff, paraprofessionals, six thousand, three hundred, eighty-five dollars and fifty cent. Teachers, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred, fifty-seven dollars and fifty cent. Materials, fifteen thousand, six hundred, and professional development, eighteen hundred as presented.
And a second please.
A second, Hannah.
Mr. Lesku? Or I'm sorry, Mr. Didn't see a name on here. We see who's walking up there.
Good evening, Board of Education, teachers, staff, guests. So just to give you an update about summer school, the format's going to remain somewhat the same as years past, where we stick, we stick to the timeframe of June. Uh, it runs sixteen days, Monday through Thursday. Uh, we're going to have two days right after the last day of school, Thursday and Friday, to Summer Institute Training Days with the staff for WAZED. The summer school program's going to focus more on math and science, robotics, make it more of a enrichment experience for, for those students. Pre-K through second grade was teacher recommend, rent, uh, recommendations from, just based on uh, testing data that they do, um, relationships, personal things going on with, with the kids that would rectify their recommendation. However, third through seventh grade, we looked at their projected proficiency and I A R, and we targeted the students on Level One and Level Two. That way, we have uh, more time with the students over the summer. We can get them more engaged. So if you have a Level One student in math, they might really find it very interesting to study robotics, which will get them over the hurdle of uh, performing better in terms of uh, on our I A R assessment for the state. So we, we targeted those students and made it a requirement. We're looking at fifteen students per grade level, pre-K through seventh, roughly a hundred and twenty students. Uh, we're going to have a grab and go uh, setup. Uh, the first day they'll get breakfast, but after that, uh, we'll do a similar setup as we did last year, where the students will leave for breakfast for, or lunch for the day and breakfast for the next day. So we worked it out with the uh, Mr. Berannick and the lunchroom staff to do that setup. And then teachers' contractual times will be eight AM to one thirty. Students will be dismissed at twelve thirty, so that allows for students to have prep time to get ready for the next day. Because with the WAZED program, you do have materials that you have to get set up from day to day. So we want to make sure we allocate time for those teachers. And then Fridays, we're going to leave open for uh, Dr. Betts administrators to also work with the teachers on uh, professional development opportunities during the summer. So that's a format that we instituted in years past that works well with the staff, so we want to continue that practice. Does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Carla Jonah-Harratt.
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna.
Yay.
Tanya Taylor.
Yay.
Penny Williams-Wolfford, absent.
Yay, yay, Penny Williams-Wolfford, yay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What time she entered? Uh, what time did you enter?
Six forty-two.
Thank you.
She gotta always come in special, guys. Welcome Penny.
Okay, Penny Williams-Wolfford is yay. Um, Woody Morris?
Yay.
And Brian Dawson is absent. Uh, Board Member Jerel?
Yay.
Okay.
Motion, motion passed. Moving on to the uh, five-year lease agreement, need a motion, please, to approve the five-year lease agreement.
All right, Board Member Hannah, I make a motion um, to approve a five-year lease agreement with Pitney Bowe. Commencing June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, through and including June eighteenth, twenty twenty-seven, for a postage meter machine at a monthly cost of ninety-nine dollars and twenty-one six, uh, five thousand, nine hundred, fifty-two dollars, sixty cents for five years.
Cheryl, please, a nice second.
Mr. Lesku. Thank you, Cheryl.
Good, good evening again. Um, so our current uh, postage meter is a five-year lease with the district. We've had Pitney Bowes for at least eleven years since I have been here. Um, so it expires in June seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Their current lease is a hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-five cents per month. So signing a new lease would get, would allow it to be ninety-nine dollars and eleven cents per month. That's a cost savings of twelve dollars and twenty-four cents. We see no issues with this uh, postage, postage machine. We also receive discounts on our postage. And this is what, this is what it looks like if you've never seen it before in the front office. Questions?
Roll call please.
Carla Jonah-Harratt.
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna.
Yay.
Tanya Taylor.
Yay.
Penny Williams-Wolfford.
Yay.
Woody Morris.
Yay.
Brian Dawson, absent. Student Board Member David.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the calendar, please.
Board Member Hannah, I make a motion to approve.
You skip one.
Okay, I guess I'm just a little lax today. I need a motion to approve uh, the longevity celebration, please.
I make a motion to approve, I make a motion to approve to recognize the longevity of staff during a longevity celebration to be held at Lindop School District Ninety-two on Wednesday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, from four thirty PM to six thirty PM.
And a second please.
Tanya Taylor, last second.
Okay. Mr. Berannick?
Sure, I can speak to this one. Um, we will be getting another tent for graduation. It will be delivered, we're hoping, the weekend before, so it's going to be out there for the entire week to be able to have graduation practice. And by trying to maximize as many events that we can have out in the tent, we're looking to host this longevity evening celebration again, just like we did last year with it. Uh, with it, it was a very nice celebration last year, so we just figured, let's try to get it here at Lindop. We can kind of decorate everything that we can do out there the way that we want it, celebrate um, outside on our grounds. And it's a good way to utilize the tent for that, you know, another purpose.
Any comments?
I just have one. Mr. Berannick, you just saved me because the students thought we wasn't going to have a tent, and I was just getting yelled at and told to come and talk to y'all, so thank you so much.
You're very welcome. It was, it was supposed to be kind of a surprise on that, um, but you can relay it back to the student body.
I gotta keep myself safe now.
Yeah, I'm happy it's back too. So beautiful. Okay, roll call please.
Carla Jonah-Harratt.
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna.
Yay.
Tanya Taylor.
Yay.
Penny Williams-Wolfford.
Yay.
Woody Morris.
Yay.
Brian Dawson, absent. Student Board Member Jerel David.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, okay. I need a, a motion to approve the calendar, please. I didn't, yeah, I messed up this time again.
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three calendar as presented.
And a second please. Penny Williams-Wolfford, a second. Okay, is it up there on the, is there anything on there? No, it's on, it was on board, but up the top.
Uh, we do have the calendar up there. I believe the reason that it's taken a little longer um, than normal to approve the calendar is we were waiting for two oh nine to see what their calendar was. I do not think they sync though. From what I understand, I think it syncs with the elementary buildings out there. Uh, pretty much mirrors your regular um, calendar as it's been presented the last couple of years around the Thanksgiving holiday, the winter holidays with it. Uh, the start date, I believe, is August fifteenth for the teachers. It would be a week of uh, orientation slash improved school improvement days, and then the first day of student attendance on the half day, I believe, is that Thursday. The, I believe it's the eighteenth of August.
Any questions or comments, board members? Okay, you know, the teachers approved it, correct?
Correct.
Tell you, that's the main thing as well. Roll call please.
Carla Jonah-Harratt.
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna.
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor.
Yay.
Penny Williams-Wolfford.
Yay.
Woody Morris.
Yay.
Brian Dawson, absent. School Board Member Jerel David.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Okay, discussion on Lindop School District Ninety-two celebration. Need a, need a motion, please, for the Juneteenth celebration.
All right, Board Member Hannah, I make a motion to approve the Lindop Ninety-two sponsorship of the June nineteenth celebration, June seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, and that amount of ten thousand dollars to be paid from the educational fund um, for community, community events as presented.
And a second please.
Tanya Taylor, last second.
Okay. I know that uh, hopefully everybody was able to read the attachments that were on your board docs. Okay, this is a celebration. Everybody knows that uh, last year was so fantastic. And we heard about all these sponsorships. Everybody was sponsored, but uh, they didn't even ask us to sponsor. Be careful what I ask for. We might get something, we, it might be, become a little bit overboard. That's okay, uh, that, this, uh, the mayor out there. But I really felt like, man, we, we're not a part of this, you know, supporting something for the community that was so dynamic. You know, so all the tax embodies are asked to uh, participate as well as have that amount uh, for the celebration. There's different ways that it was presented. I know that they can also do a complete fundraiser. That's another way of accomplishing that goal. But we, uh, Dr. Jackson looked into the fund, and it's going to be under board community events out of our board fund, and don't forget, we didn't get a chance to go to any conferences. So the conference is right here at the, we gonna celebrate. That's our conference right there. And what a great exchange, right? What a great, great exchange. Um, any comments, board members?
I know I might be gone by that time, but I cannot wait for this amazing celebration to happen again. I was there last year. It was awesome. I saw you all, and I can't wait to have it again this year.
You are not going anywhere. You will be there. Stop it. Ain't going anywhere. But thank you, Mr. David. Thank you so much. I think I just met you during that time. And uh, before you were uh, in your position right now. You impactful then as well. Anyway, are there any more questions at all? Any comments? Okay, so without further to do, roll call please.
Carla Jonah-Harratt.
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hanna.
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor.
Yay.
Penny Williams-Wolfford.
Yay.
Woody Morris.
Yay.
Brian Dawson is absent. Uh, Student Board Member David.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Moving right along. Hey, Board President Report. I really did not have a Board President Report tonight, but I feel compelled to just communicate a little bit more about our referendum. When this refer, this ideal of this referendum came across us as a board, we spent several weeks talking about this as taxpayers. Took to even present a referendum in the middle of a pandemic. They had to come through us to even have it come out of our mouths, make it logical, make us understand why. And they did. We asked a lot of questions and we understood uh, the need for it and, and really the dollar, the numbers. I noticed that many districts, you know, I don't know if everyone knows this, we have life safety funds that we have allotted in our budgets. And those funds are to keep our building, you know, we're proactive about keeping our building in order. But sometimes we just don't have enough in that life safety funds. I see other districts that I visit, things are falling apart. You've never seen, when you drive past Lindop School, it's a sense of pride that, that Mr. Ballantyne, Dr. Jackson. It's, it's, it's a positive building for the community, to say the least. I can remember when we went to NSBA as a board, and we, I took a tour of a Boston school right near Harvard. And I toured their school and I saw the library that they had and the learning environment they had for these students. It was just out of my mind. It, it was, it was a building that opened up the ceiling. I couldn't believe it. But that's how they thought. They, they wanted to make sure an environment was so uh, enticing for these kids to learn. And I'm going to tell you this, our team here, they think out of the box for these students. Think about all the programs and resources that we have. Thinking about Blue Ribbon, STEM, robotics, you know, debate team. All I can say is that hopefully everybody that's here tonight that has questions about the referendum, come back for the town hall meetings because, you know, we're all in this together, and we want you to know how this is going to impact you, your taxes, because this is going to attract more people to the, to the city, just like it's doing right now. Lindop is a sense of pride for this community, as other schools are, but Lindop is, I can speak about Lindop right now. So without keeping you all here all night, but I want to let you all know, we are taxpayers too. Anyway, without further to do, go right ahead. I know Dr. Jackson isn't here tonight. Moving right along. Oh.
Yeah.
You want to just, can you read Dr. Jackson's report? Can you go back to the beginning? Okay, well that uh, Mr. Berannick, can you read her report? Thank you so much.
Moving from good to great by any means necessary, unlimited potential, unlimited possibilities, and academic excellence with mastery. Curriculum Director Dr. Betts has been sought, sought out by
The Illinois State Board of Education to join the Illinois Assessment of Readiness Range Finding Committee and Data Review Committee. Significant, Dr. Betts will be given the opportunity on a statewide committee to continue advocacy for the marginalized demographics and testing protocol, policy, and the impact that critical race theory has, has systemically in educational practice and performance. Highlight, Dr. Best Prior's, Dr. Betts prior work in a rural, low-performing community, and the lessons learned while moving students' achievement to sixty-six proficiency in three years. Mr. Berannick, you have the rest in front of you?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Board Goal One, Student Achievement Curriculum, two thousand twenty-two, Erickson Institute, McCormick Foundation Executive Fellow. Uh, Superintendent, Dr. Janice Jackson has been nominated to become an Erickson Institute Executive Fellow commencing August two thousand twenty-two. This program is designed to provide highly influential leaders from multiple sectors with a credible, up-to-date, and research-based understanding of child development. The Erickson Institute Early Childhood Learning Academy is seeking nominations for the Executive Fellows Program scheduled on August third through fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and September twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Attendees will walk away being able to illustrate policy solutions that can improve outcomes for young children and their families exemplified in quality, access, and equity.
We continue to not be average. Continue.
The ideal candidate should be influence professionals who are responsible for one or more of the following. Making decisions about resource allocations and funding of programs that serve children and families, making recommendations for changes in policy, programs, and practices, and improving student outcomes. Congratulations, Dr. Jackson. Board Goal Three, Programs and Services, NJHS first in person since two thousand nineteen. Induction Ceremony. Board Goal Four, District Finances. Mr. Berannick will participate in providing professional development for school districts across the state. In providing professional development for school districts across the state. Of Illinois to deepen their understanding of what can sometimes be a challenging role. Um, I will be presenting May nineteenth um, to superintendents, school board members. Um, through IASA in a virtual conference.
Hold on. Just to let you know, Mr. Beranek also presented at the IASB Conference and he did a workshop on. The basis of, of uh, finance, wasn't it? Like finance.
Basic expenditures, it's going to be pretty much the same presentation, um, just to introduce it to new board members. New superintendents through IASA.
I wanna let you know, we have superstars in this district, you should have seen it, we have superstars in this district. It was so, if, people talked about just how well it was presented and the ABCs of understanding the basis of finances. And we did that. Okay, you did. Go right ahead, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop.
All right, uh, Board Goal Four continues with District Finances. E-Rate is paying our internet for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year in approximately twenty-one thousand, five forty-six. That is the commitment of Mr. Ellisky, working behind the scenes. Um, utilizing his background knowledge to apply for those rates through, or discounted internet rates through E-Rate.
Keep on clapping.
Board Goal Five, Community District Relationships, Broadview Library Coloring Contest. The Broadview Library had participants from our schools and five of the eight winners are from Lindup. That's fantastic.
Oh wow. Another hand.
He's from second grade.
In no particular order, the Lindup School District ninety-two winners are from second grade Ms. Blake's class and second grade Ms. Evans. We have Cree W., Madison P., Zuri J., Melissa D. and Sanjay J. Congratu-, or sh-, what is it? Shania J. Congratulations.
Again, we're not average guys, I'm so sorry, go right ahead.
What'd you do to me? Mac user. Board Goal Six, Recruitment and Retention, Grand Canyon University, April sixth through the eighth. Dr. Betts attended the Grand Canyon University Collaborative Partnership Retreat. For a sole purpose of creating a pipeline for teachers for Lindup School District ninety-two in general education and special education. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Dr. Betts.
And that would conclude Dr. Jackson Superintendent Report.
Okay, I think she did an excellent job at bringing out her goals.
Yeah.
And how they've been met up to date.
Further to do, Student Board Member Report.
Um, I have nothing wrong uh, for this meeting.
Okay. Anything, anything on your heart, Mr. David?
I, just a couple of things. It's not gonna be long. I just wanna acknowledge our fifth grade students again with their amazing work in that classroom. I also wanna acknowledge our second grade teachers for their second grade students and their amazing accomplishments. I would be remiss to um. Not talk about my other students in the middle school, intermediate and primary wing with the testing of IAR going on. I want us. For next year or to start thinking about how we can. Start assisting our students a little bit who have that testing anxiety. And those who are coming, like Mr. Kenobi said, we just came back from a pandemic and to take a standardized test like that. I, I can say it was a little bit of a struggle. So I just want us to keep those students in mind. And I do applaud our administration for doing this. I know you all coordinated the IAR. Last year when we were still doing hybrid learning, so Dr. Betts, thank you. Um, it is very, very hard and I just want us to remember our students in this time. Um, I know eighth grade is getting ready for graduation. I apologize for saying, um, by the way. Uh, we are very excited and we thank the board for all their collaborations and help with that planning and. Helping provide us with our graduation resources and for getting us the tent so their student board member would stop getting yelled at. Uh, that will conclude. My Student Board Member Report. Also, this is my, it's my second to last meeting, next month will be my final meeting. As the active student board member here and I wanna thank you all for this opportunity.
We're not hearing capacity, I'm so sorry. You can forget about that. Thank you. Thank you so much.
This concludes my report, I told you I wasn't long.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving right along to committee reports. Finance Committee. Did not have one, Mrs. Griffin and I, there was no need for a board, uh, finance meeting. Personnel Meeting, uh, to be determined in the future. Pace Meeting, I know um, Mr. Ms. Dawson, Mr. Dawson, uh. Really, Ms. Wolf, Wolfert.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, there Mr. Dawson is? Go right ahead. Pace Meeting, go right ahead.
So, um, we, we did, um. We will be having our meeting tomorrow night, um, Pace is moving forward to wrap up the, um, the school year, just as we are, one of the. Interesting things is, uh, they just recently acquired a new, um. Coordinator for, um. The jobs program that they have and so they're doing excellent work there. Through the pandemic, there were a lot of, uh, losses where a lot of the young people who were, they were. Helping to find jobs, were having a lot of problems, but they just found a new coordinator and things are getting a lot better as far as their jobs program, that's really the, the main report. Uh, tomorrow, we're gonna be speaking on, um. Uh, interaction with two oh nine and, you know, steps going forward. But, that's it.
Thank you. Safety S-E-L. To be determined.
No, we got a meeting coming up, uh, tentative date, May the fourth.
Thank you. Policy Committee Meeting, uh, Mr. Dawson, this is Williams-Wolffert.
Yeah.
You had one, April sixth?
Yes, uh, the next one will be, yeah, that's correct, May fourth, first one, um. The board approved, uh. Several numbers were first read and adopted, but I don't, I don't think there's been any major.
Ms. Williams-Wolffert, any comments?
No.
Thank you. Pera CIA Committee. Date to be determined, Ms. Morris as well as Ms. Taylor. Technology Meeting, Mr. Hannah, Ms. Taylor, next meeting to be determined. Strategic Planning Meeting, uh, Ms. Jonah-Harris, Ms. Williams, this is also a pending, um, meeting. Board Referendum Committee, it's here.
Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow at one o'clock.
Thank you so much, okay. Are there any public comments? Any additional public comments? Please come to the podium. I don't know if we have a policy on two public comments, go right.
Kudos to you. So, uh, first I wanna say, you know, thank you for the approval of the Freedom School. Um, I don't know if you guys know what Freedom School is really about, but. To have something like this in our community, not just for Broadview, but for the region, I'm talking about.
Can you tell us a little bit about it?
So it's a, it's the Freedom School is an opportunity to give those that's underserved an opportunity to get a little bit more service. And so the thought process behind it, working with Michael Romaine as it relates to the Freedom School and how it came online. Um, is to create civic engagement, literacy, mentorship. You know, just make it holistic, Black Studies, because we know we need to be teaching Black History or, you know, Black Studies in our curriculum. And sometimes that's challenging for the teachers in the classroom to implement that conversation. So this will allow that conversation to take place within our communities. And so it's important, not just for Black children, but for all children. And so it's given us the opportunity to have that dialogue, to talk about this, to get the parents engaged. It's really a big deal in this, even though the three hundred and fifty thousand is the, uh, dollar amount for the grant. Um, if it's awarded the whole three hundred and fifty thousand, it's an opportunity for the funding to go forward. So it's something that's gonna keep going on, on and on and on. And the grant is through ISB, uh, this has come from the legislation through the Illinois Legislative Black Caucus. And the thought process is to have a Freedom School in every Black community. And, uh, it was just we feeling that we took the, uh, that we took the lead on, talking to Michael Romaine. He asked me about it, uh, the village got behind it to, you know, put the grant, because we have a grant writer. And so the grant writer was kind of, you know, walking through the pieces as they scribe the notes that need to go with the grant and with the pieces. So working with our grant writer, our finance director, the finance team here and the administration team here to make it holistic, uh, we do have a steering committee with committee, uh. Community members of the commu-, the community to be a part of this. Because we wanted to be inclusive and not exclusive just to one group of people. We want. All children age, you know, in that grade, that grade range, fifth to eighth grade, to have an opportunity. To get a little bit awareness and when we talk about civic engagement, I don't know if many of you all know, but, uh, Mr. Baby is a part of my mentor program that I have once a month at the Village of Broadview, the Broadview Young Scholars. And we talk a lot about civic engagement, how we get the young people to look at legislation and how they create, uh, public policy. And so over the summer, we're gonna introduce them to, um, learning how to write witness slips. On things that they need to lobby and legislate for at the county level. And then we'll escalate it with, uh, we get into the General Assembly, we'll escalate it so that they have the opportunity to be able to lobby things that impact them. It could be things at the school, it could be things in the, uh, the community, but we really want them to be engaged. To take the lead on this, because if we get the young people engaged in civic engagement, the parents will get on board and then they'll understand. Why it's so important to vote and be engaged in the community, so that's the thought process of getting everybody on board, so. I just wanna say that I'm humbly grateful that you guys approved that tonight, because it's a big deal for us and I mean, it's a legacy. For all of us here in Broadview and when you talk about, um. How we just don't. You know, the, the, the good work that's taking place within this district, it just don't stop here. You know, we got young people that's coming out of this district that's doing some phenomenal work. And it comes because of leadership like Dr. Jackson, it comes with leadership like this Board of Education that have to make hard decisions. And putting your, you know, putting the money where the mouth is. Let's just do the work and serve the community at a high level and that's my whole intention of being the mayor and I'm proud to be the mayor of Broadview, but it's a lot of work. But, you know, somebody has to do it and I'm glad God gave me the, the duty to do the work. Also, you guys approved for ten thousand dollars for us to do the Juneteenth, uh, celebration. And why that's so impactful to us in, in Broadview. Um, when we got into civil unrest, we didn't know what the outcome was gonna be, right? And so, the Village of Broadview, we was the first in the state, the county, and within the other local municipalities to make Juneteenth. A holiday, we was a holiday before it became a federal holiday, so we was the first. To say that we're gonna pay the mispo employees to have a day off so that they can do some research. And be informed and knowledgeable of what Juneteenth was. I have to say that I'm, I'm privileged because I come from a family that we honored Juneteenth and we celebrated Juneteenth and so I knew about it, I knew what it was about. When I talked to my colleagues, a lot of them didn't know what it was about, whether you were Black, White, Asian, Hispanic, they, they just didn't know what Juneteenth was, so I felt that it was. My obligation to make sure that Broadview is well-informed and educated of what Juneteenth is and what the history and the legacy. And I have to say, I'm Black and I'm proud. I don't, I don't negate from that, I'm Black and I'm proud. You know, I'm proud to celebrate my culture and I'm proud that. We are in a predominantly all-Black community where we can celebrate and share our culture with other diverse, uh, other cultures within our community, so. I wanna say thank you, Lindup, for, for that, that really, uh, pleases my heart to see that. We can work together in different tax and bodies to make a beautiful event. Last year, the village took the lead on during the celebration. And we raised quite a substantial, quite a bit of money to, to pull it off, but we're taking it to the next level. And when we take things to the next level, it costs a little bit more, so it's a lot of great things that's taking place, all the tax and bodies. Uh, the people that do the heavy lifting for us, and I'm not talking about the elected one, I'm talking about those that do the day-to-day operations. They are the ones that putting the plan, that's putting the plan together and they, you know, they're talking to the entertainment, they're doing the kids activities. They are really doing the heavy lifting on your behalf, so we do have representation at Lindup, that's part of the committee. That's coming back and giving the thought process to the leadership here so that you guys can make an informed decision, but we look forward to hosting it again this year at Shore Park. Uh, we look forward to seeing you all present there in it. It's just such a, um, a good thing for our community. And finally, as it relates to the referendum, when I heard with the ref-, well, I didn't know what the referendum was about, so that's why I'm like, I gotta find out. And so to hear that our property taxes is not going up, it's important that we take care of the public entities and we talk about the public entity, we talk about the structure of the buildings. And the maintenance and what, uh, pleases my heart is that you guys are gonna expand the library. I've always been a student of learning and I think it's important that we give all of our students an opportunity to have a safe place to go. Within the building called the library where they can read. Because reading is where knowledge really takes place.
You know, Thompson used to be here, it's kind of an odd library, isn't it? It's, it's, that doesn't mean you can't learn there, but it's just a different type of library.
I mean, as, as, as years go by, we, we wanna upgrade it and do things and want it to be a lot, uh, a learning environment that's conducive for the student. But I don't care how big or how small the library is, long as the student have access to current, uh, library materials, that's what's important to me. And that we then give the opportunity to families to build a home library. Because it's a lot of students that go to school here, they don't even have a home library. And so we need to look at that opportunity, how do we get home libraries within the home? Because reading is knowledge, I mean, they're gonna have to read at some point and we gotta be the ones to push that agenda to read literacy. I mean, even with the Broadview Young Scholars, they read a lot, legislation, policy. It's part of what we have to do to understand, so I wanna say thank you for the explanation. But the last question that I do have is what exactly is the question on the referendum? You can tell me after tomorrow.
All right.
But thank you, I just, I just really wanna say thank you for the highlights, just keep doing a, a good job and I've always said, even as an employee of District ninety-two. As a resident of, uh, District ninety-two, I've always said that Lindup was gonna be a Blue Ribbon School and I truly see that within the next five years that. This school will be a Blue Ribbon School, I see it today, thank you.
Your three minutes is up. Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Thank you very much. Need a motion, please, to go to. To go into executive session, please, at seven sixteen PM. Night.
I may, I move that the board go into closed session under five ILC one twenty dash two. And C one four, one four eight nine and ten to discuss the. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline or performance. Or suspicious employees of the public body, evidence of testimony presented in open hearing or in closed hearing were. Suspiciously authorized by law, security procedures, school building, safety and security. Student discipline cases and the placement of individual students in. Special educational programs and other matters relating to individual students at seven seventeen PM.
And, and a roll call.
Carla Jonah-Harris.
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hannah.
Yeah.
Tanya Taylor.
Yay.
Penny Williams-Wolffert.
Yay.
Woody Morris.
Good.
Brian Dawson.
Yeah.
And. Student Board Member, Jerryl David.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. As you just wanna roll right, right, right on in, let's, let's, we're gonna, we're gonna go right on into it, if that's okay.
Check, check, one, two, mic check, two.